We'll call to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners work session for December 8th, 2015. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among multilateral cultures.
So, this morning, I got a couple of things I want to do before we move into the agenda. I think it's appropriate at this time to have a moment of silence for a couple of different reasons. One, for the folks in San Bernardino, that's an issue that is growing in America and it's going to continue to grow until we stop it. And the other one is for our assessor's father, his family. I know all of our well wishes go out to Raul and his family, so if you'll just have a moment of silence with me for those people, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, first item on the agenda this morning is to approve the regular meeting agenda. Are there any changes that need to come?
Mr. Chairman, yes. We have addition of item S.
Yeah?
S.
Yeah.
S is in cam. It's a resolution.
And, uh...
Oh, the work...
The work session...
I'm ahead of myself. I'm like, yes, we have additions. No.
You're much closer than you were.
I did. No, not...
We were zooming right ahead.
Ready to move on?
We got a motion for adjournment.
I'm ready. I'll wait.
All right, let's get a motion to approve the work session agenda.
One more second.
All those papers, six, five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. The purpose of the general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting and for the department heads of other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with the Grant County Resolution Number 1501, we welcome the public to attend a county work session, but there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So, at this time, we will review the regular meeting agenda. I may have said regular meeting agenda earlier. Please do.
We do have two additions to the agenda, item S, which is a resolution for Finance Authority application for the Santa Rita Fire Station construction, and also item T, which is another Finance Authority resolution for the Loma Verde subdivision assessment district. So, first item is financial reports, the expenditure report. Linda, would you like to go through the highlights of that, please?
Yeah, I'm starting. Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, and members of the board, you have a packet with the expenditure report for the period ending December 7th, 2015. And then there we have a total of $1,241,567.55 for the AP checks. Included in this total is a check to Engineers Incorporated for $6,749.96, and this is for engineering services at the North Hurley wastewater project. We have a check to Wright Express Fleet Services for October fuel in the amount of $22,056.67. A check to Stoven Construction, this is for payment number one, for the construction and remodel at the Conference Center, and this is in the amount of $89,778. A check to Fowler Brothers for 3,500 tons of base cores in the amount of $20,259.93. A check to Ascent Aviation, this is for the fuel at the airport and the truck lease payment in the amount of $34,286.25. A check to Creative Bus Sales, and this is for a 2015 passenger bus for Corte Caminos in the amount of $18,412.80. A check to Motorola Incorporated for six handheld radios for Whiskey Creek Fire Department in the total amount of $10,300.50. We have a check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority, and this is for the regular monthly tipping fees and the purchase of recycle bins in the total amount of $50,643.76. A check to the Hela Regional Medical Center Foundation, this is to revert some funds back to the House Council. When we took over the fiscal agency for them, they gave us the total amount of the checks and we're just reverting some of it for some bills that they left unpaid. That's for $24,390.15. And we have a check to Wells Fargo for $17,616, and this is for the November P card purchases and the promissory savings that are purchased with the credit card. Then we have the payroll checks for pay period number 23 and 24 and for clothing allowance for a total of $469,442.91, bringing the total sum of $1,707,010.46.
Moving on to new business, item C, approved, disapproved, one board member to the Hela Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. You received one letter of interest from Rudy Martinez. His letter and resume is in your packet.
Yes, Rudy, do you want to say anything?
Good morning. Just push the white button there. The white button. All right. Well, good morning and thank you for allowing me to say a few words. I think, excuse me, that participating in boards such as the Hela Regional Medical Center Board is certainly a privilege and an honor, but most of all is taking part in the community to make sure that we continue to provide the medical services that we provide currently and also expand and help the hospital grow to meet the needs of not only Grant County, but the surrounding counties and other folks that utilize the hospital with their many services. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Rudy.
And you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for stepping up to the plate. It's sometimes hard to find good quality people to take these board positions. Go ahead, Charlie.
Item D, honored dare graduates from the Kobe School District from Sharpeville and Item E, approved, disapproved vehicle transfer of a 2010 Dodge Ram ST 4x4 from the Fire Management Office to the Public Works Department. The State Fire Marshal's Office has approved this transfer. Item F, is approved, disapproved, Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department, PERA adjusted qualification report and record form for the following volunteer firefighters, Randy T., Juanita Volan bean, Mark Standard, Judas Standard. We had some of these last meeting. This is just something that PERA requires, is requiring of all fire departments. Item G...
Just a moment. What's the difference between you got approval, disapproval on the... Oh, that's Santa Rita and one's Pino Salto. Okay. And then these forms that they have in here just shows they've got to do what, so many hours of training before they qualify for PERA or what?
It's their years of service.
Years of service, too? Then I saw some training.
And it's based on their training hours that they volunteer. It's a little different, but it's... And then they found some errors, and so now they're having to do and clean up their forms. Item G is the same thing, approved, disapproved, Pino Salto's Volunteer Fire Department, PERA adjusted qualification report and record form. I'm not going to read off all of those names for those firefighters. Item H, approved, disapproved, application to the New Mexico Finance Authority for construction of LS Mesa substation. Ms. Whitmarsh received approval from the State Fire Marshal's Office to construct a substation on the LS Mesa for the Pino Salto's Fire Department. Lucy, is there anything you want to add or discuss?
Well...
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Lucy Whitmarsh, and I'm the Fire Chief for the Pino Salto's Volunteer Fire Rescue. And Randy did have a question about whether or not we also need to request approval from the County Commission to build the station, not just to apply for the funds. So, Randy, did you want to address that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to make sure that how we go about it, I mean, now that, I mean, John used to do every application, everything, and everything just went through, but working with Anthony and I, we just want to make sure that we have the steps so that we're not going back and forth and trying to get whether we need approval from the Commission to build the station, obviously, because it is county property. And at that point, do we also, there's a resolution for the Finance Authority. So, I just want to put the steps together so that the departments know what the procedures are moving forward.
I think you guys are going to have to lead us a little bit on that. We haven't built one since any of us have been in office.
Okay.
So, I don't know exactly what you did. I think the last one we built was Wind Canyon.
Correct.
Anthony, what'd you have?
Mr. Chairman, there are, there is a signature line in the application for the chairman to sign, so it does have to be approved by this Commission, the application itself. Plus, there is a resolution to actually, to apply and incur debt. And so, I haven't got to that point yet. I spoke with Lucy previously and told her I wouldn't be able to get to that until I have four others right now that I'm going to submit next week. So, although the application approval is not necessarily premature, we'll still have to bring a resolution to the...
So, we can do this, but we're going to have to do some more.
That's correct.
Do you want to hold on to the...
I didn't know this was on the agenda. I was going to bring the approval of the application and the resolution during the January meeting.
You want to just do them all at the same time? I mean, this one's not going to move forward without the other one, is what I'm understanding.
That's correct. And we could always, the resolutions, I have a form, a resolution form that we can add on the next agenda. We already have one for the brush truck that needs to be, come up. If the Commission says the wishes, we could add it to the agenda. I just want to have the application in until after.
What's the pleasure of the Commission?
Actually, we just do it all together once again.
I think a trainer should do it all together. It's not piecemeal and you don't end up leaving one out.
Then Charlie, go ahead and remove item I from the agenda for this one, and we will get all of it done in January.
Okay. Is that going to be a part of it? I need to see it, Brian.
I'll take care of it. I'll bring it to the Commission. We already have one application that's already been submitted that didn't have signature and doesn't have resolution, and we're trying to fix that up right now, so that's why I said if we do it all at once, it'd be more effective.
So, is it the same type of resolution that we're doing on S with the Santa Rita?
That's correct.
Okay. So, do we need...
Eight, eight.
Or is it eight, eight? Okay, excuse me. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, and the reason I bring this up is because I know that the forebear came to you asking you to purchase a truck, so that portion was devoted on that. So, now this process is there. Once it gets, then it goes to the State Fire Marshal's Office for the Fire Protection Funds, which they also agree to, and then they say if you need the money or they request that you go to Finance Authority, and so that's that step. And that's why I'm just making sure that whether it's a truck, whether it's a building, whether it's a side-by-side, whatever it is, that the fire departments come to you, I want to make sure that we follow the proper steps, we're not bouncing all over the place on your agreement and your allowing them to purchase, because obviously, it is Grant County's equipment.
Yes, okay. I think that's what we'll do, Lucy. Thanks for... Yeah, we'll just, we'll knock it all out in January, unless you've got somebody that's against having a fire department up there, and I don't think you do, so...
Thank you.
All right, move on to item I that I was going to kill.
Approved, disapproved agreement A 15-43, it's State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for Capital Appropriation Grant Agreement 15-0782, Grant County Heled Regional Medical Center. This is a capital outlay grant agreement that was put in Grant County's name. It's for $200,000 to purchase equipment for Heled Regional Medical Center. There's a little confusion with DFA and how the questionnaire was submitted as to whether or not the hospital is a component of Grant County. So, rather than try to figure that out and hold this process up anymore, we can just basically act as the fiscal agent for this grant agreement and allow them to move on and purchase their equipment.
That stuff's probably already spent, isn't it?
No reason...
We love it.
Did you want to talk about what you plan on spending, or do you have anything you want to say, Brian?
Thank you, and thanks for the help with that. The piece of equipment we're, I have that earmarked for, is a nuclear medicine imaging gamma camera. Right, so it's a big, expensive piece of equipment, about a $350,000 piece of equipment that we'll apply this $200,000 to. Our present gamma camera that we do nuclear medicine studies on patients is end of life and parts are not replaceable, so this will enable us to replace that.
So, a gamma camera, what does that detect?
Gamma radiation. A patient would be injected with a very, very small level of radioactive material that eventually clears out of the body. It gets targeted to a certain area of the body, a certain organ, and the camera then images the radioactivity coming from that area.
So, does that help you detect cancer or...
All kinds of things, cancers, lesions, yes. Yes, predominant.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you for the help with that.
Item J, approved, disapproved agreement A 15-44, State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for DWI Grant Agreement Amendments Number One for Project Number 16-D-J-G-10. This is a grant agreement amendment for an additional $115,000 for DWI grant funding to accomplish the same task as were outlined in the first grant agreement, which Cindy gave a report to you the last time she was here. So, this is just an additional amount of funding. Item K, approved, disapproved agreement A 15-45, it's an amendment to the Juvenile Detention Center contract with McKinley County Juvenile Detention Center. The county had an existing contract with McKinley County. They are having to increase their contract rate to $175 a day to house juveniles. Facilities across the state are struggling with juveniles, not having enough, looking at closing their doors, and this was a last effort for the McKinley County Board of Commissioners. They were going to try to see if everyone had agreed to paying an additional rate rather than closing.
What are we paying currently?
Do you know what we're paying currently?
I don't remember. I should have had that with me, but they're having to increase their costs, or their costs are increasing, so they've got to increase their daily rate. And right now, this is the only long-term option that we have. We have an agreement with Luna County for short-term holds, less than four days, and we have an agreement with Doniana for short-term holds, which is also less than four days. Doniana, if they have space available, they'll keep them longer, but we have to stay in day-to-day contact with them. So, this is the only option that we have right now for a while.
And then we pay a ton of money on transport, too, so...
Correct.
What's really sad about this is that we've talked about it for years, about regional detention centers for juveniles. I mean, every county should participate in the funding or how do they want to do it? But the piecemeal Band-Aid thing that our state has been doing for years is just not working. The, I mean, I'm aware of the restrictions and stuff we're having with juveniles and trying to house them and stuff, a specialized unit that's going to be able to, you know, take care of a regional amount of counties. I know this year, from the oil and gas, we ain't got the money, but it's something that they really start working on. I don't know, we worked on that in the past in the legislature?
I believe there was, or we got, worked on it in, I don't think it made it through the session.
Yeah.
I think that's something that we need to be...
It's something that maybe we need to be real persistent about and maybe have a statewide and maybe come up with...
And we need the state to quit rating the detention center fund. I mean, they're supposed to put $5 million in it and they're putting three, and they're probably going to try to rate it again.
Yeah, and of course, that is for state prisoners, the reason that's there.
So, we subsidize the state.
Yeah.
And we've also been pushing for regional juvenile center over in Hidalgo County. It just seems like we just can't get Hidalgo County to get all the proper paperwork to our legislatures that we needed in the past. So, we're going to keep pushing it and hopefully, we can get some resolutions from...
But you know, I'd like to see that statewide.
Yeah.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, the other reason that the incarceration costs are going up for juveniles is because of the standards the CYFD has set for the facilities themselves, and because of those standards, I think the legislature needs to go back and they need to review what those standards are and the standards that they're imposing on facilities just for the incarceration of juveniles. And they're, and just to give you an example, in the standards for juvenile facilities, you have to have at least two times the number of detention officers that you normally would for adults. And I think the, I think the legislature needs to go back and look at those standards and they need to, you know, change the standards that they're imposing on juvenile, on the detention centers for incarceration juveniles.
You know, what I may want to do is, in my being on the board and I'm on a subcommittee that that's what we deal with, I'm going to see if I can't bring up something, see if we can't start something. It's going to take multiple years to get it through.
Oh, yeah.
So, it may be something that we can work on.
The other thing I would like to add to that is, the Sheriff's Department is very fortunate that McKinley County meets them halfway with the juveniles, so that helps us with the cost.
Sometimes they bring them all the way, is that what you mean?
Depends on the weather.
Any other comments or questions on that? Moving on to item O, approved, disapproved agreement A 15-46, the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Grant Agreement for the Grant County Airport. This is a grant in the amount of $90,000 with a $9,000 match from the county for, to remove and install a new AWAS system. Justin has this money in his airport fund, so that will replace that very old and antiquated piece of equipment. Moving on to item M, approve or disapprove bid IFBB-15-04, Grant County Courthouse Electrical Upgrade. ASA Architects recently released bids for upgrade of the electrical at the courthouse. The low, the apparent low bidder was Linco Electric in the amount of $118,977, and we would recommend award...
Was it...
Yes, it was.
Because our estimate was about three times that amount. Are we sure we're getting everything we're supposed to get?
My concern is that we're going to get hit with some change orders, so usually, that's just been my experience, when one comes in, much lower than the architect's estimate is there's going to be change orders, so hopefully, I hope I'm wrong.
Okay.
Yes. The engineers estimated an amount of $260,000 after the plans were done.
Oh, okay.
And so, it was actually significantly lower than we first anticipated, and then the bids came in lower than that, so I think that...
Well, you know, one of the things that might be, might cause that is copper is two bucks a pound. That's not necessarily good for Grant County, but it might be good for electrical work.
Anyway, I hope I'm wrong. Item N, approved, disapproved resolution R-15-42 to support the 2016 legislative priorities of the New Mexico Association of Counties. Ron, do you want to talk about these, or do you want me to?
Oh, sure, I can talk to him. On it. The N-MAT, which is New Mexico Association of Counties, what we decided this year was to make sure that everyone is on board, each of the counties, of the 33 counties, on certain projects, and that way, we think that they have carried more weight going through the legislature. And so, as a result of the vote of the 33 counties, we came up with four priorities, legislative priorities. One was the restore of the detention center funding, and that's just what our chair was talking about, is that years ago, they gave us $5 million and they raided it, raided it, raided it. And what it is, is that so that our local counties, our local entities do not have to support, supporting, keeping state prisoners, parolees and people like that. And so, they raided it and raided it where it doesn't mean anything anymore, and we need to get them, come back and revisit that.
And not to interrupt you, but that was actually, they didn't just give us that, we won that in a lawsuit.
Okay.
And so, really, they should not be messing with that money whatsoever.
What kind of jurisdiction do we have on that lawsuit?
Well, you know, that might be the next level, just...
Okay. The other thing was the support funding for statewide emergency medical services, EMS's assessment and stuff, bringing together all the EMSs, put them on the same page and stuff so we have light treatment, light work and stuff, and so, we'd be thinking it'd be a real asset to the citizens of the state of New Mexico. The, this is what I really love, and I tell you what, I just reading on it, the funding of Mexico 3D elevation program, the 3B, Deep, to develop light detection and ranging technology, Light Art, and Public General did a real good article on that, and it has to do with land managers say that millions of federal dollars can be put in good use in New Mexico for everything from wildlife management to homeland security, if the legislature is willing to commit matching funds to a national program that aims at creating a three-dimensional map of the entire county, even our assessors, it could be used for that. There's a whole list of things that can be used for as far as water and watershed, and this is every state in the country would be approving this and supporting it. Economic development, wildfire, urban impact, flood, hazard risk, emergency response, transportation, utility corridors, urban growth planning, forest management, we need that, emergency development, homeland security and defense, tribal lands and agriculture. So, it's a, it's a product. They fly over this with this infrared and they actually come out and with a thing that looks like this, and it's really exact, even the elevations. We don't have the exact elevations in state of New Mexico. So, the last is the grocery street tax reform, and I'll let you take care of that.
On the grocery seats tax reform, what this is asking is that counties be able to participate in a discussion and be at the table when it comes time to talk about reforming grocery seats tax. The county grocery seats tax structure is a convoluted system of increments that either are unused or just unusable, and so those need to be revisited so that counties can actually take advantage of all of those increments that are out there. So, that's just asking that the counties be, have a seat at the table. At Prospectors on, when did we do that last weekend thing? We, I did bring these up to our local legislators and emphasize the importance of the Detention Center Funding Act, as well as the grocery seats tax reform, and that those were very important to our county for, when they heard those in the session, so please pay careful attention to those. Moving on to item O, approved, disapproved resolution R-15-43, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a colonius infrastructure project number 3352-CIF, its fund slash loan agreement and an intercept agreement for the community of North Hurley by and among the New Mexico Colonius Infrastructure Board and the New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County. This is to do the first phase of the North Hurley Road Improvements. We've talked about this several times. talked about this several times. Item P. Approve/disapprove Resolution R-15-44. A resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a colonias infrastructure project number three-three, that number's wrong. We'll correct that. CIF fund loan slash grant agreement and intercept agreement for the community of Tyrone by and among the New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County. This is to make the ADA compliance sidewalk entrances in Tyrone. We also talked about this previously. Item Q. This is approve/disapprove Resolution R-15-45 to adopt the Grant County Airport Action Plan, including the draft airport layout plan updated and to be submitted to the FAA. At our last meeting, we had a presentation on the airport plan as well as the proposed layout. And it is a requirement that the county commission approve and adopt that plan to submit to the FAA.
That was an impressive presentation that they did on that. A lot of work went into it. Now, I'm really pleased because that's an economical thing, too. We get that fixed and stuff, then we can start looking at some other things and maybe bring some additional bucks in the county.
The one thing I felt was kind of sad about is the money comes so slowly that they were talking twenty years to finish a plan. And it's like, the planning's be done now. So we just need to start hunting money.
Yeah.
That's what we do, right?
Item R. Approve/disapprove Resolution R-15-46. Notice of intent to consider an ordinance amending the dedication of a county local option grocery seats tax. What this is proposing is currently the county has authorized the three general purpose one-eighth increments of grocery seats tax. The second and the third one-eighth go into the county indigent fund. Statute requires that the second one-eighth go into the indigent, not both. The third one-eighth can be used for both purposes, general purposes and indigent. We have a significant fund balance in our indigent fund, and we're constantly struggling with our general fund to complete projects. Um, or we just have money to function. And so what this would do was it would take the third one-eighth and put it into the general fund to be used for general fund purposes. And I think it's even more important to be looking at utilizing this to the best of our ability. I was reading the revenue forecast for the state and with oil and gas revenues being down, the recurring revenues are shown to be, their new forecast is sixty-two million dollars less than the previous forecast a few months ago. So the picture statewide is not getting any better. So we're just gonna have to look at taking care of ourselves and doing the best we can. And I just think these funds would be better suited to be moved into that general fund rather than sitting in the indigent fund. And those are also being targeted by the state to fix their gap with Medicaid expansion. And, oh, and I just want to clarify, too. It's not that we could never use that for indigent. If we needed to, if we had expenses were beyond what that second one-eighth would generate, we can always make the budget adjustment to cover those indigent expenditures. So it's not like we would be taking money away from that. We're just trying to better use that revenue.
Yes, but it's no different than what we talked about a second ago with the inmate priorities. All these grocery seats tax increments are earmarked for specific items, whereas municipalities are not earmarked. So they can use their money to the best benefit of the county. Whereas counties, or the city, counties have thirty-seven different increments or something like that.
Many counts.
And from a sixteenth to a twelfth to an eighth to a quarter across there that are all earmarked for very specific things. Well, if that fund needs more or less than you're generating from that increment, you can't use it for anything else, or you can't move it to another line item. So this is one that we could fix ourselves, and I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you came up with it.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments on that one? Item S. Approve/disapprove Resolution R-15-47. A resolution authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Santa Rita Fire Station. This is the new addition. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Anthony?
This is just one of the applications that I've been working on. And of course, we need a resolution for the package. And in order for them to move forward, we have to get this thing done. But we've been working on this for, what, two years now or something like that since the beginning of the land exchange. So finally, hopefully, we'll get funding for a fire station.
Five, because I actually looked back at my notes when I campaigned my first, my second time I ran, and it was in that. So I'm glad to see this finally coming to fruition.
Next, item T. Approve/disapprove Resolution R-15-48. A resolution authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Loma Verde subdivision assessment district. This is also a new addition. Anthony?
Yes, this is the same application that we made for a previous assessment district. We borrowed the money, utilized the paid back from the assessment district to pay the loan off. And that way, it doesn't really affect Grant County general fund. Hopefully, we have everything in place. I'm submitting this application now so that hopefully by February, when we have our actual ordinance, we'll have the money in hand. We won't have to dip into general fund monies to get the construction done. So, but that's all I have. The only thing I would like to bring to the, since we're on a Loma Verde subdivision, we were supposed to have a assessment role hearing today. And it's not on the agenda because we found out that we had to go out and issue a notice to each individual resident as you do in the preliminary hearing. And we failed to do that. And so we're going to set that up for January meeting. So.
Thank you. Next, item U. Approve/disapprove Health Fund Claims and Internet Fund for the period of October 2015. There were thirty-five claims in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Item B is the claims, healthcare claims for November 2015. There were a total of forty-one claims in the amount of forty-five thousand, seven hundred, ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents and one claim to Hill Regional Ambulance for eight hundred, twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents for a total of forty-six thousand, six thirteen fifteen.
I guess we're ready for county reports. Ryan, are you ready?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. Couple of updates for you. I want to just update you always on finance. And just a reminder, this is as of the end of October. So end of October finances. We were at about a hundred and forty-four days of cash, which is really good for us. We've been hovering around a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty days, so staying very stable with that. Excuse me. On the revenue expense side, we're about at break even after about four months. We're hovering around break even for this fiscal year, which is actually really good for us. We're about three hundred thousand dollars ahead of budget. We're still putting a lot of expense into the upgrade of our electronic medical record. Those of you who have done that in your organizations know it's a big undertaking. Our go-live for that is scheduled for February first, so we're closing in on completing that project. But that's the one that's been challenging us with additional resources, contract resources and capital funds. But that one's coming to an end finally. There'll be a lot of optimization efforts ongoing after that, but the major portions of the project will be done. So revenue expense side, we're about break even at this point. We're probably a little bit above after the month of November, but we don't have those numbers in yet. From a community standpoint, we've been moving forward, I mentioned this a while back, with this, another big project, this concept of a clinically integrated network. So the ACA requires or directs this movement in healthcare towards more collaboration to deliver more value for our patients. So it's a good thing. But it takes a lot of effort, a lot of work, and a lot of work that's new to healthcare to do this. We typically have independent practitioners, physicians, you know, and the hospital. And this type of effort requires us all to come together and to agree on a direction and an approach to healthcare that improves the value that we can deliver to patients. And you do that through IT interoperability. You do that through determining best practice, patient flow throughout the whole continuum, not just in the hospital, but through the, through the community. And you do that through linking up other support services. So this is a massive project. And we continue to move forward with a local group of physicians. We have a steering committee of about thirteen members right now, mostly physicians. This is a community physician-led project, physician-led and professionally managed. Hill Regional is supplying the management of the project for this, for this to move forward. It will ultimately, if we continue forward, end up on the establishment of a completely separate entity, an LLC, composed of physicians and the hospital and other healthcare groups in the community. But truly a community-led effort to provide the best healthcare possible to those that we serve in our community. I wanted you to know that that's going forward. I guess the really, well, you know, this will bring flashbacks to some of you, but it's exciting for us. We are at the point today and this week for our board members, or next week for our full board members, doing a presentation around a construction project that we're proposing. And so here's where the flashback comes in. We're talking about addressing the labor and delivery rooms in Hill Regional. It's been a longstanding issue. And also the inadequate space in our operating room recovery space. They're kind of connected. So this was an original, you know, effort that ballooned into a much bigger project that eventually, you know, did not get moved forward with. We're focusing on the root cause issue, which is our OR space and our labor and delivery. The intent is to enlarge our OR space, to enlarge our labor and delivery space, move that out of the current area. That's gonna create a domino effect throughout our organization, moving beds down the rest of the hospital. We anticipate that if we move forward with this, we'll be presenting to our board. But it's about a six to eight million dollar project at this point. We don't have final numbers. But obviously, at some point, we'll be coming to the commission and talking about some combination of Hill Regional funds and some form of debt for the additional funds. So I wanted you to know, we're at the point now, after studies and input from a lot of people, moving that forward to the board and making a decision, are we gonna move forward? And then discussing finance options from there. The last item I have is just a thank you to our county manager, Charlene, and the commissioners for their support with the transition of the, you know, the resources for the Grant County Health Council and helping us through that transition. That allows us to redirect those resources into efforts that directly impact kind of the patient care of our county. So thank you, Charlene. Thank you for commissioners for that. May I stand up for questions?
I think a six to eight million dollar project's a little easier to swallow than a forty or forty-five million dollar project.
We agree.
Bonded out over, like that last one was.
We agree.
We've been talking about that since I was on the hospital board twenty years ago.
Yeah.
So I know that it's critical, and there's been other critical things that have been done. But I'm glad you're focusing on that.
Our plan is to actually do it. Yeah. Okay. Any questions, Gus?
Yeah, it's interesting. I think I may have commented only before, your innovative network and such. You know, whenever two costs are started out, that's one of the things we learned that it was these pieces all over. And you're bringing it together. And it's, I congratulate you for that because I saw a real need for it. I had no idea until we got into that research. And then to hear that you guys are doing it, too, it made me feel really good as a whole.
Yes. Healthcare, as you know, is such a fragmented system. That creates so many problems.
They call it a siloed.
Yeah. I appreciate kind of the elements of the ACA that are driving us, pressuring healthcare to become more integrated. It's ultimately much better for our patients.
Oh, much better.
And we're excited to be part of it. And at this point, I think, you know, I was at a recent hospital association meeting. We're one of the only communities in the state that's moving forward at this level, at this level of integration.
Great.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I recently had a family member have to go to the emergency room there at Hill Regional. And I just want to tell you, the emergency room, they were a class act. They were the, you never want to go to the emergency room, but when you're there.
Sure.
And you get treated the way we got treated. It was really good. People just treated us fantastic. They really did. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of positive.
Thank you.
A positive comment versus all the negative sometimes that we get. But keep doing what you're doing. We appreciate that.
Thank you. As you remember, a couple of years ago, the emergency room was one of our, one of our major sources of complaints. And we changed the approach to our medical care in the ER and lots of other work around there. So that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. I'll see you in the bottom lot.
Yep, thank you all.
All right. Mike, you ready?
Chairman and commission members, respectfully submitting my report from November seventh through December fourth, 2015. Item number one, those are, policies are still being processed and we're, so the status remains the same. We're still approving those. Item number two, the detention facility update. We currently have no vacancies for this reporting period. We have employed an operations lieutenant, and that is Lieutenant Michael Bonifat. And he had been selected to fill the position, and he comes with several years of corrections experience, supervisor experience. The corporals and the sergeant physicians, the applications have been selected. And the applicants will be provided sufficient time to prepare for the written test and the promotional process. Item number three, on our assessment, we're still awaiting a report from the Association of Counties. Item number four, the training update. There are ten remaining department personnel who are gonna be receiving their first day training and certification this month. That'll pretty much catch us up. Of course, our training is ongoing, but that'll pretty much catch us up for our forty hours. On the inmate intervention, the inmate support program, subcommittee testified before the prospectors legislative forum in on December the third. Progress report was given to the legislators along with the program funding request. One of the recommendations from the legislative body was that we get a committee endorsement, which we've done in the past. So we're gonna, we're gonna pursue that again and see, we're pretty sure we can get a committee endorsement and carry that as a committee bill. Item number six, on our recognition and award program, we are waiting nominations for employee of the month for the December. On our detention statistics, Grant County detention, the average daily population for the month of November seventh through December fourth is forty-five, which is five less than last month. The high population males is forty-four, nine less than last month. High population females, nine, one less than last month. So for this reporting period, there were forty-five inmates booked into the facility, which is five less than last reporting period, which shows a decrease in activity. The average length to stay for this reporting period is eight point three-six days. And I have enclosed again for you the survey reports, all of the jail survey reports. If you have any questions with those, I'll certainly answer any questions you might have. Again, I submit those reports for you so you can get a better idea of the activities in the jail and what our capacity is and just kind of give you an outlook at the genders and the males, females, those types of population that we have in the facility. Item number eight, monthly arrest totals for, this is for the month of November 2015. Silver City Police Department is eighty-five, Grant County Sheriff Department fourteen, New Mexico State Police at nine, Bear Police at six, Santa Clara at five, Hurley Police at four, Gamin Fish at one, and Western New Mexico University Police at four. Item number nine, on our detention facility transports, we conducted thirteen district court transports. In Division One, Magis Court, Magis Court, we had fourteen. Division Two, we had one. Silver City Municipal Court, zero. Santa Clara, zero. Bear Municipal Court, we had zero. Total number of medical... Total number of medical transports conducted during this reporting period were five, for a total of thirty-three for the month. And item number ten, on our jail utilization and occupancy, the offense levels, we had twenty-one felonies, fifty-one misdemeanors, and we were talking about the probation violations and the warrants. Those totaled for seventy-six, for a total of a hundred and forty-eight. The total hours in custody are twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-nine hours. And again, this offense level showing statistics that they're slightly lower compared to last month. Any questions?
Seventy-six is what we're talking about that the state's not paying for.
Yeah, it is, sir. Yep, that's the majority of them. Yes, sir.
I have no questions.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Manager and myself did a presentation to the prospectors on our legislative capital requests. We did get some feedback from our legislator from Tucasa. Senator Morales was concerned that we don't have a lease agreement yet for the property, and so he pretty much volunteered to try and push that along a little bit faster. So, as far as that, we had a lot of good comments, some much-needed services that we need for Grant County, and, but that was the only concern that he had. We also did receive some comments on the chip splitter. Representative Zimmerman was, being an engineer, he had comments on, you know, those chip splitters are kind of the lifeblood of the county road system, and so we had some encouraging comments.
Probably not at all.
But anyway, it was encouraging to see that, you know, those type of items are recognized by our legislators as priority. So, also, other than that, I've been working on applications to Mexico Finance Authority. There's lots of people making requests. We worked on the Colonia's application. It should be ready to submit next week for Tyrone. Last, we submitted the same application last time. We were awarded the plan and design money, but not the construction money. I worked with Charlene to try and come up with a way to fund that without affecting Earl's, his work plan, because we've got so much work for the road department and still be able to do that project, and I think we've worked it out to where we're going to be able to. And so, we're going to go ahead and submit the project for the Colonia's. We also did have a conference call with the F A on the potential C D B G application for Tucasa, and we had some more encouraging conversation. She did ask for some things, and I'll be meeting with you, Commissioner Hall, so that we can get some more information for them. But other than that, I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Arthur. Taking notes. Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As you can see by that build for that basement, we did get it all hauled into Roseville for that project. I had a pre-construction meeting with J and asked the engineers in custody, they're going to start Monday lower north water lines over there on Roseville, and they're finalizing some plans for the road construction itself. And once they get that going, then we should be able to really get going on that project after they get those water lines done. We did start all that low water crossing out there on the Range Road at Duck Creek Crossing. Finally, we were able to pour yesterday, and we're going to pour again Thursday. It probably won't be till next week or part of the week after that before we finish. Getting concrete right now is pretty hard. And when I do get it, it's twenty yards at a time or something like that, is all I can get. Southwest is real busy right now between the bridge, and they got some big pours going on in Dimon. I guess they're hauling from here actually all the way down to Dimon, too. So, we're working on it. Other than that, it's just business as usual. We are starting to haul the half-inch chips in for the chip seal project. I've got a couple of trucks doing that. I'm here, also.
Go back to.
Anthony.
Except we talked about roads. Any, I know you've been up years in alligators, but when canyon?
When canyon, well.
Was any movement this?
I think it was all vacation, so we haven't been able to work on the bids. That's the next portion of that assessment district is to get a bid out, same as we did, just finished up for November. So, that's the next process.
Okay.
So, we'll try to get those bids out before our next commission meeting.
Thank you. Anything else for Earl?
Just, Earl, I did have that question for you on that TNT road. Whereabouts do we actually stop maintaining road right there on that Red Rock area?
We go all the way down to the highway.
Okay. So, all of that is ours, and it ends right at that TNT road? Is that what?
No. No, it starts there on Red Rock Road from there off of Mangus Valley, and we go twenty-five miles across to be at the highway on the other side going down to the village of Red Rock.
Okay, so anything in that subdivision isn't ours?
No.
Okay. Just, we didn't understand that. I refer them to Commissioner Hall, but they insisted I get that answer from them.
No, they had a little side room.
Are you going to get any news on the bridge completion date?
I know they're pouring like crazy.
The east side, they're supposed to start today. That's the east.
I have those trucks on one eighty east who're driving me crazy at night, middle of the night. Jake breaks one down that hill.
Oh, I tell them to honk every time they pass my house.
Let me let that down.
Okay, thanks, Earl. Appreciate it. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I was to have a merger for the communal study data kind of, you know, our fiscal year ends October or September twenty-ninth. I just wanted to give, have her an opportunity to give you kind of an update from a budgetary standpoint. But we are working hard, you know.
You want to put her on Thursday's meeting? You don't want to?
Well, she just took ill today, so I have no idea. So, that's why she didn't make it. Sorry, I didn't say that, but it was at the last minute she was going to make it. But again, I wanted her to come for you and just talk a little bit about the program, the fiscal year we ended, two thousand and fifteen. Obviously, as you know, Mr. Chairman, being on the board, that cash match is our biggest issue. Hopefully, we're going to continue to try to rectify that and make sure that we are able to use those funds, because as you know, the amounts awarded to us, if we're not able to bring that cash match, obviously, we have to give some of that back.
Did the whole bounce? Go ahead and pay up. Was it Lordsburg and Hidalgo?
Hidalgo has committed. Lordsburg has not, but we're working on it. That's one of the things I was going to have her talk about as well. We were able to get a new bus in two thousand and fifteen. Obviously, our, you know, the buses have a lot of miles on them, but we are working on a vehicle replacement plan. We also with a webpage and trying to get that going to get more people on the bus. Cleaning up some of the audit issues, we had an audit done by a company that assistance compliance review that comes by annually. So, there was some issues there, and we have to submit some of the corrections by December eighteenth, and we're going to get that in as well. So, again, I think in two thousand and sixteen, this fiscal year, I think we're doing good with the help of you, Mr. Chairman, and the county manager, working with some of our stakeholders in the transportation system and hoping that we'll be able to spend all those funds in two thousand and sixteen. And then obviously, going into two thousand and seventeen, we want to make sure that we continue to work towards making sure we get those funds and making sure we get buses. One of the issues we have is the wheelchair, they're just trying to get somebody credible to work on them, because we do have some that are down, and we're going to have to get those fixed as best we can. Going into the senior program, I know there's been some issues with some of the senior with the building, Santa Clara, we finished that portion up, and that's open and everything is done.
Beagles on regular schedule?
Excuse me?
Beagles are on regular schedule.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, almost everything seems to be going perfectly over there. Now, the Heela Cliff Center, we had some issues with the hood ring. State Farm Marshal's office is waiting on the design stamp from their office. That's taken a little while. I talked to John Stamter, who's the State Farm Marshal, the man in charge. They lost three personnel in the last two weeks, so they're backlogged a little bit. So, I reached out to Senator Morales, and he is reassuring that we'll have that stamp done hopefully by the end of this week. I know Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hall was concerned about that, and I'm hoping to have that open by Friday. I'm not going to guarantee it, but I'm working with State Farm Marshal's office and Senator Morales to try to push that up and get those documents signed, and everything seems to be in place. The M Co. just got to go in there as soon as the stamp is put on the design, then we're ready to go with that. From the fire departments, everything's pretty quiet. There is the movie conference that we had last year will be again this year, dates on March thirty-first, April second. I encourage everybody in the community to attend. There is a fee for registration. Registration will open up sometime in December. Again, it's the Wild Urban Interface Conference that we had last year. They tried to hold it in the same place for two years, and then they moved around the state. So, last year, obviously, it was at the conference center. This year, we'll be at Western New Mexico University. Problem is, sometimes they have it right around spring break, and that's probably why we're able to use the university, because it would probably be spring break around that time. Other than that, Public Works is working hard, and we have a lot of issues at the jail, but we're working with Mike and his officers to make sure that we get issues that are on high priority done. So, other than that, the conference center is being the most active speak. Again, they have the contractors meeting every Tuesday at ten. Commissioners should welcome them to attend if they proceed, but it seems like it's going pretty good. So, unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Do you have questions?
Yes, I do. Mr. Viall, I was going to call you anyway, so I'm glad we're talking now. I want you to let me know where we're at with the project, the flood project on the bottom field. I had already told Mr. Reese that he can use my discretionary funds to take care of that. We've been missing with that flood problem for like five years since I've been on this commission, and I've been telling him to go ahead and utilize that discretionary funds for probably the last three. So, we really need to take care of that flooding as soon as possible, because, I mean, it gets bad every June, and every time it gets bad, we waste a lot of money trying to revamp that field, and if we get it done now, hopefully, it'll save us some money in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure almost, I think that he's been working on that. I think we were looking with engineers in, would be the best plan to go forward with that.
They already put together a plan, and I believe it was like a forty thousand dollar project.
Okay. I'll get back to Mr. Reese on that, and then I'll get back to you and see where we're at with that plan. I honestly have not spoken to him about that in a while, but I will get back on that.
Please.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Pretty much, it's fairly steady for us. We've been on the go quite a bit, getting ready for the holidays coming up. Just want to alert the public just to be alert on their homes and when they're out shopping. We haven't really had many reports of burglaries in regards to that, but just want to keep the community alert. We're finally, thanks to God, moving into our vaults. Finally, the project was done last week, and this week, we're going to try and get everything moved. That's going to be a long process getting the evidence up here, because we're going to have to do it a step at a time to make sure everything's accounted for the right way and entered and removed and stuff. But thanks for everything that you guys have done in regards to that. I look forward to everything, being here, easily accessible for us. Other than that, I just want to thank my staff for the work that they do. Like I say, we've been busy back and forth with holidays coming up and everything, but other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the chair? Are you going to be able to purge any of that evidence when you finally get in there and see what's been there since the courthouse was built?
Actually, within the last year, we've done a lot of that, gotten rid of a lot of stuff that's been done, and we're going to continue to work on a lot more, because there's a lot that we can purge, but it's just a long process that takes time, researching cases and getting orders.
And just so that Paul can understand, a lot of that, where you say we purged, we got rid of, that's through court order.
That's correct, yes. That's what takes the longest, is getting everything. The case has to be researched to make sure everything's been cleared through the courts and everything before we purge anything, but, so that's what takes, what's time-consuming, because we have a lot of cases and a lot of evidence that we got to go through.
Because I know that there's a lot of records down there, too, that we need to get into and get.
We just moved all our records, and that was a lot of stuff, and we're going to go through that and go by the law in regards to getting rid of some of our old records that we no longer need. But it's a long process, and I'm just thankful that we're finally able to move up here.
I know, partially, whenever the city started working on their vault that's in City Hall and some of the old records they found in the basement and stuff, it just, oh, so interesting.
Right. Anything else? Bob?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. I don't have much to report today. I do have staff out today and training with Dominion. They'll be gone today and tomorrow, getting ready for the election next year. We're still working on those districts, getting everybody moved in the right district, making sure everybody is where they're supposed to be. I did want to congratulate Mary Alice Murphy on her recent award for Small Business of the Year. You know, one thing about our media in Grant County is that, you know, my office, since I've been in office, the media, out three newspapers, tremendous helpful, tremendous help to our office in getting the word out on voting, and, you know, they're champions of voters and getting them out to the right places. So, I want to thank not only her, but the entire media of Grant County for helping us do that. It saves a lot of money when you have three newspapers that can get out the word to the voters. Having said that, if there are any candidates that are wishing to run for any of the commissioner spots, we have maps available in our office. They can come to our office and review those. I've already had, you know, a handful of people come up and look at those and try to discern where they're at on those maps, and it looks like it's going to be an interesting election coming up, so we look forward to that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Let you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Earl? Okay. Interesting times. I agree with you. There's a lot of chatter. Charlene, you got anything?
No, I don't really have any report. I was just going to talk about the state revenue and how the loan that looks, but we've already talked about that. I just would like to say thank you to all of the staff. I've put a lot off on them in the last few months, especially Randy and Anthony and Linda. My ideas and changes, and it's a lot of work for them, and I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all of your support, and we'll just move forward and get ready for the legislative session in January.
Yep. Well, this is probably our last work session of two thousand and fifteen, so I'll hold my comments till Thursday, so.
Sounds good.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
All those in favor, say in five or say nine.
Aye.
Motion passed.